Pursuant to Section eighty-four, fourteen, eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice this meeting was given November twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. The chairman and visitors may obtain a request to be heard for from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. And according to policy, the requests to be heard for must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering in the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion.
Yes.
And wanting a snack?
Yes.
Check out.
Indeed, indeed I am.
We joked that if we let him speak that he would ask for the snacks.
No, I would not.
Yes, you do. Because it's your honor. All of them. Yes, they want to see it. You know, just me. They're such good kids. This is fun stuff. Okay.
Shh. I don't feel comfortable having you behind me.
I don't feel comfortable.
Too many pieces. We could have gotten some.
They're just looking at each other.
This is business, right? You know what? Sometimes you can step up in front of them.
No, no, no.
And especially when it's good, when they're here to give praise. If you were in trouble, you'd want to be in front of them.
I never want to be in the front row. I always look back. It's hard to come to the top.
I taught at the school twelve years ago. So I have been at the school longer than you've been alive. She was at the school longer than I was alive. Yeah, right next to me. Especially just so. I have a church.
I know. He's ancient. He gets anybody retired from.
Who was your life partner?
Mr., um. But we were more like we wasn't. Like, you know, but he's like my president on my, um.
Really? What did he teach? Mr. Haynes or Mr. Harvey? Mr. Haynes was your president, you don't know well because that man does everybody and who knows about him. And he knows Winston Churchill Church.
I know. He's ancient.
Your head is your book in that one. He's bossy. He's here with you. Oh, I just. You gotta read it now. You're gonna guess that they're gonna give two of them to this entire, all their first year.
I mean, they're fresh.
No, but this is easy. We would talk to kids, but.
They're fresh.
I mean, you're doing the announcements. Oh, okay. Joseph said, no way. Not doing that. She says, besides my crunk, how sketchy is she? She says. You should have been here. Oh, my God, my name was probably. I don't think I was really. We got the wood crops out. It's hard, though. I get it. It's a language, too, and like, unless you think a lot in that language, it's hard to translate it out of the mouth. You have to think a lot in the language, work you.
Oh, no, I don't.
Come on, I mean, mix it up. Yeah, we should do this. Yeah, just go with the family with her. I'll write your pass. I guess nobody really knows it's you, except for, they know your voice. Really? Is that?
You have a very accented.
So what is my, is the announcement? They are beautiful. Yeah. Hello, good morning, honey.
We should do that.
There's no sweeps here when in our building, except for the foreign teachers. It's great. She would do it. I told her she would do it. Why? Oh, because she can't say goodbye. You know, it's called the wife. With the H. Oh, yeah. I thought it was. Oh, you're good. I had oyster crackers for a snack before. Oyster crackers. I love, look, I didn't eat crazy. They're like eighty-nine cent past. I mean, garbage. It's a big thing that just gets, my stuff, people too, shut my ages. I mean, don't think I don't think I've heard of it, but I do. I wouldn't. It's just like. Right air. It's a little bit of cheese.
Pursuant to Section eighty-four, fourteen, eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero, 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 one and the Board of Education Service Unit number nineteen will be held Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M. in the Viking Center at Omaha North High School, forty-four, ten, North Thirty-Sixth Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administration Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section eighty-four, fourteen, twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is published on the back room near the entrance door. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
To flag the United States of America and to be the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as.
Sorry, we're used to having a R O T C group to bring the flags in, and we realized a couple of minutes ago that we did not bring one, so apologize for that being a little bit abnormal. Vice President Smith, Keelius, and the vision and mission.
The vision: every student, every day, prepare for success. And the mission: to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Head.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Juarez. Crackey.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Tealyn.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Present.
Foal.
Here.
Nine present.
All right, next up, we have School Spotlight with Mr. Maskell.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board, and interim superintendent Ray. The OPS Proud Spotlight tonight features students from Benson High and Burke High who are part of the Yearbook and Journalism Program. Both programs earned a Cornhusker Award from the Nebraska High School Press Association for Publication Excellence. To begin, I'm happy to introduce faculty from both schools, beginning with Angie Wolfe from Burke High.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Angie Wolfe, and I am the Journalism Advisor at Burke High School. I first just wanted to kind of explain to you what the Cornhusker is and where it comes from. Like he said, it does, it is sponsored by the Nebraska High School Press Association, which is our state scholastic journalism nonprofit. And every year, they bring in lots of different publications, from newspapers to yearbooks to online sites, and they have a critique, critique competition, and they send off all these publications to journalism and publication experts around the country who judge, and they send back with feedback, which the feedback is always really valuable, but they also give us a ranking. And so my colleague at Benson and I both submitted publications that came back as Cornhusker, which is the highest, the highest award that a yearbook can receive in the state of Nebraska. And if you go on the N H S P A website, it does talk about how this is like the cream of the crop. There were only, I think, eleven given out in the entire state last year. So we're just really excited to be here and to show off our students, and we're just really proud of the work that they did. So thank you so much for having us.
Good evening. I'm Justine Garman from Benson High School. Hello, thank you for having us. We are very excited to have won this award. It's our second time winning it. We won it for the first time in two thousand and fourteen. And each year, we have just fallen just a smidge short earning superior ratings, and to be able to push through with a wonderful group of kids was just an incredible experience. And they put in so much hard work. Their theme was "We Are," and they showcased as many students as possible of our school, featuring all the things that they are, the athletes, the non-athletes, our club members, our students who stay late, babysit, et cetera. So, thank you.
Okay, I'll go first. Hi, I'm Dylan Vobeda. I am one of our editors in chief this year of the two thousand and twenty-four yearbook. I just want to take a second to explain what yearbook really means to me. I've been in yearbook for three years now, and it has really opened me, opened up to me everything that there is to do at Burke High School. I get to meet with basically all the students around the school every year, every sport, every activity, every club. It has really shown me every opportunity that there is. It has also taught me so many skills, like interviewing, just speaking to others, really bringing people out of their comfort zone. And our yearbook staff is really close together, so it has also given me a lot of friendships with people that I may not have known otherwise. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Lofman. I'm the editor in chief of the yearbook this year, and I've also been in yearbook for three years. This is my staff right here, well, some of them. It's grown a lot since last year. Like, we had a really small staff, and we had some hard times, but we pulled through. I mean, we got the award. And it was really, like, big surprise. And when we were there and they called us and just, I was sitting next to Ms. Garman when it happened, and she just, like, looked like she was gonna cry. Like, I got onstage, and then I got off, and she still looked like she was gonna cry because she was so happy. I think she was more happy than anybody else that was on the staff, but that was really nice to see. And, yeah, and I'm glad we won it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, congratulations, everyone, on your accomplishment. That is amazing work. We couldn't be prouder of you. Do we have any questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you, Mr. Head. Congratulations, everybody. There's a lot of ways that OPS is represented across the state, ranging from athletics to test scores. But I think that an accomplishment like this, where two of the eleven top awards came to OPS high schools, is truly remarkable, and you guys have really, I, I know what it takes and then some to accomplish what you've accomplished, so congratulations. Quick question, raise your hand. Are you planning on pursuing a career in journalism? Nobody. All the more impressive that you guys were just doing this out of the goodness and passion of your heart. Congratulations. Truly remarkable. Good job.
Ms. Juarez?
Thank you, President Head. So I'm just curious, because I was never involved with yearbook when I was in high school, but is it really a smooth process to make a decision about what's finally going to enter into the book, or does it get a little hairy? I mean, I'm just curious how that part works.
So, it is definitely not a smooth project, process. I remember, actually, for our yearbook this year, I bickered with my fellow editor over there about our yearbook theme and things like that, but, yeah. So it's, we have to get everything from, like, covers to the actual book, like, the design of the book, and what our theme is, and so it's definitely not a smooth process, but we really try to push through and, yeah, for, like, the yearbook to get finished and stuff.
Ms. Crackey?
I, I have the Burke yearbook here, and it is so absolutely gorgeous. I can't wait to look at every page in here. I mean, it's just beautiful. It looks more like something at a college level, I think. It's just gorgeous. So you can look at mine after the meeting if you want to, but it's, it's mine to keep, and I just love it. I'm gonna look at it and run into the other. Thank you so much.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Head. So, former yearbook staff, sports editor, and I actually have a, my undergraduate is in journalism, public relations, so I did not quite go into that field, but it, as, as you mentioned, from Burke there, does give you valuable skills, whether you go into the profession or not, communication, interviewing, you hit the nail on all of those. Since you all came, we all have congratulated you, but I just want everyone that is a student to just quickly get up, tell us your year, and if you had a certain section that you took care of in your yearbook, sports, clubs, they still, I'm assuming you guys still break it down into certain sections? We gotta make you all get up if you came. So just kind of go down the line.
Okay, so, last year, we all kind of worked on a little bit of everything together. It was like a, we were like this. But this year, we have a little bit more organization, so we have it broken into sections. We have sports, student life, all that jazz. And I'm student life, and I'm kind of like the leader of student life. I kind of help out with everything, but as editor in chief, I work out, with, with everybody. So, I'm student life.
Hello, my name is Dakase, and I'm a senior at Benson. I am the business manager, and I'm also in the sports division.
Hi, I'm Namuge. I'm a senior this year. Last year, we were very severely understaffed, so there was like about six of us. We worked on everything together. This year, I'm currently working on the student life section as an assistant, but I'm also working on the club section as well.
My name is Elijah Beasley. This is actually my first year for yearbook, and I am working in the academics.
Hi, again, I'm Dylan Vobeda. Last year, I was a staff member, but this year, I am one of our editors in chief, which basically means that I just work everywhere throughout the yearbook, and I just help come to a final decision about everything that will end up being submitted for stuff like the Cornhusker Award.
Hi, I'm Ella Davidson. I'm a senior. Last year, I helped with photos and, like, photo editing, and then this year, I'm the design editor.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Johnson, and I'm a senior, and then this is my fourth year on staff. In junior, sophomore and junior year, I was the social media manager, and then this year, I'm an editor in chief.
Well, thank you all for being here. We really appreciate you taking your time tonight, and thank you, staff members, for coming as well and supporting your students. Great job. Congratulations.
Awesome. Well, thank you again. I have one question for you, and then we'll have everybody come around and do handshakes and pictures and all that. If, if all the students could, could go through and come to the mic again, I just wanted to ask you, what's your, what's your favorite part of being a part of putting the yearbook together? What, what has, you know, being a part of the yearbook meant to you?
Okay, um, yearbook has given me the opportunity to kind of know everybody, students and staff that work at Benson. You get a lot more opportunities, just, how do I say it without? You kind of get a free pass. I don't want to say. Um, no, they, they're still great teachers and whatever, adults, but you get to know a lot of people. Yeah, that's what I have to say about yearbook.
I'm really glad I joined yearbook since my freshman year because I got to look, work with a lot of my girlfriends, and I have a really good sponsor who, like, got me involved with everything, and I'm so glad I joined yearbook.
My favorite part of yearbook would definitely be getting introduced to our staffs. There's, like, lots of different personalities in our staff, and, um, what was the question?
It's just what you enjoy.
Oh, the opportunities that it's given me is, like, getting to know clubs, so in yearbook, I got introduced to Student Ambassador, National Honor Society, and Student Council.
I joined, well, I joined yearbook because, the main reason, because I was told to join. It actually is helping me to, like, get out and to talk to people, because, like, right now, my heart is racing talking to y'all. So it's really helping me get out and talk to people and get interviews and get to know other people into the school. And it's actually helping me to, like, actually keep me on the deadline, because I'm one of them students who will start assignment and not finish it. So it's really helping me and pushing me to get this deadline and get to the goal.
My favorite thing about yearbook has been that it has opened me up to a brand-new community. I play soccer at Burke, so I've always kind of always been a part of the athletic community, but this has really opened my eyes to what else there is at Burke, and it's allowed me to meet so many other people.
My favorite thing about yearbook is, after all these four years, I still get to come back and look at my book twenty years later and remember everything, and so I feel like being on yearbook is my opportunity to put, like, how we felt during COVID and how we worked through it, and now, like, everything our year is in one book that we can look back on.
I think that being in yearbook has definitely, like, increased my leadership abilities this year, and just being an editor in chief has really stepped me out of my comfort zone and just made me more comfortable with, like, communicating with others, and so I think it will really help me in the future, because I do want to go into the communication disorders field, so I think it will just help me with those skills and all the leadership opportunities I've had.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, congratulations again, Principal Bailey, Principal Raspousin, thank you as well for your leadership for these amazing programs, students, staff, schools. Let's give, give everybody another round of applause. And then, if you could, please, just come, come by the table, we'll give you handshakes, say congratulations, and then we'll take a quick picture over in the corner.
I'll go take a picture. I'm just shaking hands with those hands.
I hope you guys continue to enjoy it for the rest of the year.
Yeah, you should write good papers going to college. You're so good. We've seen you do that. It's so beautiful. I didn't just feel good.
Thanks. You're gonna be an honorary buddy. How old are you, Beth? Everybody look back. Plus, had I known that Isaiah was gonna be here, I really would have gave him a crab.
All right, moving on to board and superintendent communications, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. Before Benson and Burke leave, congratulations again to the teams. Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board and our community. This
We gotta make you all get up if you came. So just kinda go down the line.
Okay, so, um, last year, um, we all kinda worked on a little bit of everything together. It was like a, we were like this. Um, but this year, we have a little bit more, um, organization, so we have it broken into sections. We have sports, student life, all that jazz. And, um, I'm student life and I'm kinda like the leader of student life. I kinda help out with everything, but as editor in chief, I work out, with, with everybody. So, I'm student life.
Hello, my name is Dakase and I'm a senior at Benson. I am the business manager and I'm also in the sport division.
Hi, I'm Namugeye, um, I'm a senior this year. Last year, we were very severely understaffed, so there was like about six of us. We worked on everything together. Um, this year, I'm currently, um, working on the student life section as an assistant, but, um, I'm also working on the club section as well.
Uh, my name is Elijah Beasley. Um, this is actually my first year for yearbook and I am working in the academics.
Hi again, I'm Dylan Vobeda. Last year, I was a staff member, but this year, I am one of our editors in chief, which basically means that I just work everywhere throughout the yearbook and I just help come to a final decision about everything that will end up being submitted for stuff like the Cornhusker Award.
Hi, I'm Ella Davidson, I'm a senior. Last year, I helped with photos and like photo editing and then this year, I'm the design editor.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Johnson and I'm a senior. And then this is my fourth year on staff. In junior, sophomore and junior year, I was the social media manager. And then this year, I'm an editor in chief.
Well, thank you all for being here. We really appreciate you taking your time tonight. And thank you, staff members, um, for coming as well and supporting your students. Great job, congratulations.
Awesome, well, thank you again. I have one question for you until, and then we'll have everybody come around and do handshakes and pictures and all that. Um, I, if, if all the students could, could go through and, and come to the mic again, I just wanted to ask you, what's your, what's your favorite part of being a part of putting the yearbook to get together? What, what has, you know, been, being a part of the yearbook meant to you?
Okay, um, yearbook has given me the opportunity to kinda know everybody, students and staff that work at Benson. You get a lot more opportunities, just, how do I say it without? You kinda get a free pass. I don't wanna say. No, they, they're still great teachers and whatever, adults. Um, but you get to know a lot of people. Yeah, that's what I have to say about yearbook.
I'm really glad I joined, uh, yearbook since my freshman year because I got to look, uh, work with a lot of good, uh, my girlfriends. And I have a really good sponsor who like got me involved with everything. And I'm so glad I joined you.
Um, my favorite part of yearbook would definitely be getting introduced to our staffs. There's like lots of different, um, uh, personalities in our staff. And, um, what was the question? Oh, uh, the opportunities that it's given me is like getting to know clubs. So in yearbook, I got introduced to Student Ambassador, um, National Honor Society and Student Council.
Um, I joined your, well, I joined yearbook because, the main reason, because I was told to join. Um, it actually is helping me to like get out and to talk to people 'cause like right now, my heart is racing talking to y'all. So it's really helping me get out and talk to people and get interviews and get to know other people into the school. Um, and it's actually helping me, um, to like actually keep me on the deadline 'cause I'm one of them students who will start assignment and not finish it. So it's really helping me and pushing me to get this deadline and get to the goal.
Um, my favorite thing about, about yearbook has been that it has opened me up to a brand new community. I play soccer at Burke, so I've always kind of always been a part of the athletic community, but this has really opened my eyes to what else there is at Burke and it's allowed me to meet so many other people.
My favorite thing about yearbook is after all these four years, I still get to come back and look at my book 20 years later and remember everything. And so I feel like being on yearbook is my opportunity to put like how we felt during COVID and how we worked through it and now like everything our year is in one book that we can look back on.
Um, I think that being in yearbook has definitely like increased my leadership abilities this year. And just being an editor in chief has really stepped me out of my comfort zone and just made me more comfortable with like communicating with others. And so I think it will really help me in the future 'cause I do wanna go into the communication disorders field. So I think it will just help me with those skills and all the leadership opportunities I've had.
Awesome, thank you. Well, congratulations again, Principal Bailey, Principal Raspuson. Thank you as well for your leadership for these amazing programs, students, staff, schools. Um, let's, uh, give, uh, give everybody another round of applause. And then if you could, please just come, uh, come by the table. We'll give you handshakes, say congratulations, then we'll take a quick picture over in the corner.
Plus, had I known that Isaiah was gonna be here, I'd really wanna give him a crab.
All right, moving on to board and superintendent communications, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. Before Benson and Burke leave, congratulations again to the teams. Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board and our community. This afternoon, a swatting call or fake report of 911 impacted thousands of students, staff and families at South High. Thank you to the school resource officer, school staff and dozens of law enforcement offers, officers who managed the response. Thank you to our students and staff who followed our standard response, sorry, standard response protocol while police investigated. We practice and we prepare for emergencies. We are relieved that everyone is safe. We know it wasn't an emotional and traumatic afternoon for many. Counselors will be available at South High tomorrow morning for students who need to speak with someone. If you see someone struggling, please tell somebody, tell a trusted adult. If you have concerns about school safety or know of a threat, report it immediately. Call 911 or use the Safe to Help Nebraska app on your iPad or phone. We take each report seriously and respond accordingly. Police said this afternoon they will investigate where today's swatting call originated from. We are here for South High. Safety is and will always be our first priority at the Omaha Public Schools. Wednesday, the Nebraska Department of Education released statewide testing data and school classifications. Both used results from last school year. Staff will present in detail later this evening. Here are some highlights. Twenty-eight of our schools improved their classification at least one level comparing last year to the year before. Four schools jumped two levels. Picotte Elementary moved from good to excellent. Florence, Franklin and Benson West Elementaries moved from need support to improve to great. As we focus our work towards the growth, the growth we need to achieve, we celebrate with the students, schools, staff and families achieving this important progress. This data is only one measure of academic growth. Map tests or another, staff presented that data at our last meeting. It all connects to the data workshop we hosted in September. We are bringing this to you regularly and often because it's the core of our work. It guides our teaching and supports for our students. It is the foundation for conversations we have with families so we can partner with students, for student success. Thank you always to the research and school improvement teams who worked very hard to verify the state data and prepare it for you this evening. A copy of tonight's student and staff achievements report will be posted tomorrow to all school and district homepages under announcements. Congratulations to our students and staff on these recognitions. That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Uh, moving on to board communications, Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Head. Um, I love to take board comment time to highlight things going on in OPS that are positive and meaningful for our students and staff, but today, I just wanna reiterate some of the comments that Mr. Ray, interim superintendent Ray, um, spoke of today at South High School. Um, I just want to, um, commend, first of all, our law enforcement partners with Omaha Public, um, or excuse me, Omaha Police Department and of course, our SROs in the school that worked diligently today to handle this hoax. I know the staff up there is amazing and they have done it again. They practiced all, um, protocols, put everything in place that they've been trained on and they kept our students safe and calm. I wanna also thank the students for continuing to take the practices seriously and I hope that they continue to do so, um, at any drills that we have coming up, you know, that are, um, you know, just routine, of course. And of course, to our parents that also had a lot of faith in our staff and in our district, um, personnel at OPS and in our law enforcement that we would keep your students safe for not panicking and for waiting for the all-clear to be able to get your students timely and efficiently. So thanks to the parents as well. It's such a disruption of not only learning time. Um, I have a student at South and she was in gym class. So, you know, she went to the football field in shorts and was out there for about an hour. Um, she's just one of the students, though, that it was a disruption today. It's a disruption of student instruction time, staff time. It's a waste of our law enforcement's resources and money. And, um, to the folks that continue to do these types of swatting calls across the nation, it's, it's just, we're not gonna put up with it anymore. We, we as a school district, um, and as a community, we are in the business of educating our students and we take that seriously. So, um, just again, want to thank our students and staff and our district personnel, district communications for all their work today. Um, it was handled, handled as well as it could be and, um, we're just glad that everyone is safe and our students are all, um, home tonight safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fo.
Thank you. I would just like to echo the comments, um, that have already been made about the situation at South High today. I'm just really thankful that everybody is safe, first of all, and that the, um, you know, everything was able to come to a conclusion where, um, you know, students got home safe. There were, I think you said, you know, there were drills and we've practiced for this and it really followed through and these things, those drills matter. Um, and I, I know sometimes they can be somewhat traumatizing for the students be preparing for something like that. Um, but it just shows the importance of them and, um, I'm just really happy that everybody was able to get home safe tonight. Um, I also wanted to just explain why I wasn't here last week. So I was in Atlanta for a conference, so I wasn't able to make the board meeting last week. Um, it was for the American Public Health Association. Um, it's one of the biggest conferences in the world. It was an amazing experience. It wasn't on behalf of the school board, but, um, I went to several sessions where we talked about children's health and school health and it was very, um, helpful for me for understanding the research and the data so I can make informed decisions at this table. I was also fortunate enough to celebrate my 28th birthday and so that was, um, that was great as well. I was able to celebrate it with some friends and family. I've also been on several school visits with, um, senators and policymakers for the last several weeks, just building up those relationships with our, uh, policymakers across the state because that is so incredibly important. As the legislative chair, I just can't emphasize the importance of building relationships, um, enough. And so I was fortunate enough to do that. I also wanted to, um, bring to the attention of everybody, Christmas at the Village is going to be this Saturday on, in North 24th Street, um, in that area and I am very excited about it. If you would like to come visit me at the Fabreglabb at, uh, 2414 North 24th Street, I will there, be there giving out hot cocoa for free and celebrating with everybody else in the community. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to talk about was, um, today, I requested information about, um, LB 632 and that was a bill passed this session to prohibit the suspensions of preschoolers through second graders. And I've been hearing from community members, from teachers, from administration that they've really been struggling with implementing, um, some of the provisions in that bill. And so the exact things that I asked for were, uh, data and narrative about how the bill has impacted classroom management and, um, what the rates of preschool through, uh, second grade suspensions are. Any new procedures for dealing with students that admin would typically, uh, would have suspended under previous policy? Any new district policies or directives relating to LB 632 outside the policy the board has already passed? And how the district admin has responded to teachers and building admin struggling with the prohibition of these suspensions? And so I hope I can get that information in a timely manner. It's incredibly important to my community in North Omaha, especially considering that we have some of the highest suspension rates. Um, and from what I've been hearing, teachers have just been, and admin have been really, really struggling with this. And so this is one of my priorities with the school to prison pipeline. Um, we know that suspending these young children is not good for them long-term. Um, and so I just wanna get updates about how this process has been going in the schools and how we as a district can respond to the concerns of the teachers and the administration. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erdberger.
Thank you, President Head. On a slightly different note, uh, it's been over two years since we passed the academies and pathways, uh, provisions. And, um, I, I just wanna draw your attention to item I-15 on the agenda. Tonight, we are going to be presumably authorizing, uh, the, uh, building an arboretum at Westview High School as part of its sustainability pathway. With the generosity of private donors, uh, the State of Nebraska Arboretum Grant and the Omaha Public Schools Foundation will be building, um, an arboretum that's for, on a 4.6 acre portion of land at Westview. And the students that are in the sustainability pathway at Westview will be able to, um, help design it and maintain it. So it's a, it's a, it's a gift that keeps giving, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Uh, thank you, President Head. I wanted to just, uh, congratulate the 2023 Omaha Public Schools Hall of Fame members who were inducted. I was fortunate to attend this event along with Ms. Christopherson and, um, I wanna say thank you to the foundation for sponsoring me so that I could go to this for the first time. The recognition went to Stephanie Jones of Benson, Percy Keith of Bryan, Rich Hood for Burke, Casey Denton for Central, Danny Miller for North, BJ Lawrence for Northwest, Cedric Hunter for South, Fred Hare for Tech High and Sean Exner was recognized, uh, for his contributions with middle schools. And I also wanted to mention that, you know, it's great for the family and coaches who supported, uh, these athletes in the past and, um, you know, those that we have in place now. Who knows in the future, uh, what Hall of Famers we have walking amongst us right now. And, um, I just really enjoyed myself and appreciate these opportunities. And I'm looking forward to going to the, uh, music conferences, or not conferences, but the music presentations that are gonna happen in December 'cause I really enjoyed that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comment before we move on? All right, seeing none, next item on the agenda is public comment. We have one speaker who has submitted a request to be heard for him. Uh, the board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues that they come to speak about and we ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland. She will make sure each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, Nebraska revised statute 841412 requires that any member of the public desiring to address the board identify yourself, including an address, uh, name and, and, uh, name any organization you may represent unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. And we don't have a request to waive that policy. Um, so again, please, uh, state and spell your name, address and any organization you may represent. Um, in addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have any materials, please let Dr. McFarland know and she will get them from you. It is now 6:37 PM and our first speaker is Justin Riddle.
Before I get started, I, I give the information to you and then who, who answers that? Cause I, 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 I'm not sure if I'm looking in the wrong place. Two and a half years, I haven't seen an answer to anything that anybody submitted. So I just need to know where I find the answers. I, I've presented things so many times. Can you, can you clarify that for us?
Sorry, can you state and spell your name and address first?
Yeah, my name's Justin Riddle, R-I-D-D-L-E, on 6422 Patrick Avenue. But can you, can you clarify that so that we know who we're, why we're passing over our information if in two and a half years, nobody's ever answered? Just curious.
It's state statute.
So nobody answers, is that what, that, that what I'm supposed to understand? You're not saying no and nobody has? Are you saying there will be no answer to anything anybody ever gives?
State statute.
State statute what? I, I don't understand what that means. It doesn't, I give you information to get questions. Two and a half years, nobody's ever answered a single one. So I'm just curious how we handle that? Like, does it go somewhere and I'm looking in the wrong place? Silence? Interesting. Interesting. Well, okay, let's talk about those books. Who read those books? Anybody? Quick question, why isn't Fifty Shades of Grey in our libraries? Because it's not marketed to kids, but these are. But when you're talking about teaching 10-year-olds how to be scissor sisters, please. Did none of you read this or are we all just that far gone? I'm just curious. The stuff in those books is inappropriate for kids. Nobody's trying to ban books, so anybody who says so is a disingenuous liar. Keeping them out of the hands of children is not banning books. Sorry that we use fake words to lie. Hmm, interesting. So, ah, did you guys get the update from your attorneys today, this afternoon? Uh, yes, you did. Bingo! That's great. Um, shoot, I guess. Oh, can you please get good hand dryers at this school? How, how are these kids supposed to literally go dry and wash their hands and dry their hands and get to class? It takes 17 minutes to use one of those hand dryers. Please take care of that. All this money you guys wasted on the C3 program to provide equity in a false way to all these kids and you can't get good hairdryer or hand dryers? I mean, come on. Can't answer questions, can't get hand dryers. Uh, let's see, what else do we not do? Didn't read, can't read books. How, how busy are you folks? Cause the FOIA information is gonna tell us how busy you are. Are you guys so busy that as representatives, the one person that comes here constantly and asks questions you can't get around to? This would be embarrassing. Like if I were anybody up there, I have to admit, I'd be embarrassed. Any single one of you, you know why? Because you have no courage, you have no dignity and you have no morals. And here's why. Because these are our kids we're talking about and there's one person standing here week after week after week after week after week after week after week asking the same question. And what do you do? You sit there and you don't answer them. This is funny. I'd be embarrassed. Very embarrassed. I would have trouble looking my family in the face if every single day, I pretended to do a job for the kids, but instead, I ignored parents, I ignored questions, I called the cops on them, I got restraining orders. Let's, uh, what else? Oh yeah, and you put books, I mean, we're not gonna talk about these books that teach pre-teens how to go pick up a trick they fancy at a local tavern. We're not gonna talk about that, but what we will do is we'll have this anonymous vote that doesn't say how it was determined. Let me ask you a question. Next time a book comes out, when I bring Fifty Shades of Grey and say, hey, I want this in the library, how did you guys even make this determination? It couldn't have been from reading it. How foul are you? How foul are you?
One minute?
Think about that. You're teaching kids how to use bus stop glory holes and you think this is acceptable books because it's marketed to kids under the guise of people are too stupid to know better. Read the books. That's all I got.
Moving on to consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and, uh, considered and voted on separately. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda this before us?
So, second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Tealyn. Do we have any abstentions? Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, um, I, myself and Dr. Holman, um, both need to abstain from item I-8, uh, claim C for separate rules, um, listed within that, uh, claim, claim C.
Thank you. Do we have any further abstentions? I'd seeing none. I'd remind everyone that Ms. Cassidy and Dr. Holman are abstaining from claims report C. Uh, hearing no other abstentions, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Cassidy? Aye. Erdnberger?
Aye.
Fo?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Nine-Nine?
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to information items. Item J1A, Evidence of Improvement, Summary of Summitive Assessment Results with Ms. Suzanne Kramer.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board, and Interim Superintendent Ray. This evening, the Department of Accountability and School Improvement will provide a summary of summative assessment results for the 2022-2023 school year, along with an update on state accountability classifications for our schools. From implementing high-quality materials approved by you all, professional learning around instructional shifts and connecting students' learning to their lives after high school, our teachers, leaders, and staff have been focused on improvement this last year. The results we'll discuss this evening show evidence of improvement across a variety of measures at many schools, while illuminating where we need to have more focused efforts. Accountability for a quality education system today and tomorrow, or AQuest, has been Nebraska's framework for accountability since 2014. NSCAS reading, math, ACT, and ALPA are used as indicators within the tenets of transition, opportunities, and access, and student achievement and growth to determine classifications of need support to improve, good, great, and excellent. Today, we are going to focus on the Omaha Public Schools' performance on NSCAS and ALPA, which are used to determine the status, growth, nonproficiency, and progress towards English language proficiency. You've received the attendance report, and we'll have a full detailed report on graduation upcoming in January. NSCAS is Nebraska's summative measure for reading, math, and science. As mentioned on the previous slide, this assessment makes up the status, growth, and nonproficiency indicators of AQuest classifications. During summer 2023, standard setting for the 2021 ELA standards and the legacy math standards resulted in new cut scores in the state of Nebraska. Science scores were validated, and the ELA assessment was new in 2022. This figure depicts a summary of the spring percent proficient by subject area with trend data provided for ELA math and science. The charts for each subject area test include results from both general and alternate assessments. As you can see, as a district, we have work to do. However, our proficiency levels are trending in the right direction. These side-by-side graphics show ELA on the left by grade level and math proficiency on the right by grade level for 2022-2023. This figure depicts the five-year trend representing spring English Language Arts proficiency on the college and career readiness standards by grade level. The results include both NSCAS ELA and NSCAS alternate ELA assessments. In grades three, four, five, six, and eight, students are performing better than in 18, 19 in English Language Arts. In addition, we celebrate the double-digit increases in four of the six grade levels between 2021-2022 and 2022-2023. This graph depicts the five-year trend data representing spring mathematics proficiency on college and career readiness standards by grade level. The results include both NSCAS math and NSCAS alternate mathematics assessments. Every grade level shows an improvement over last year, while four grade levels have improved over the 2018 and 2019 math proficiency levels. In spring 2016, Nebraska state statute was amended to mandate the use of a college entrance exam for high school accountability testing. ACT was selected as the exam to be administered as part of the Nebraska Student-Centered Assessment System, beginning in spring of 2017, to all public school third-year cohort students or juniors, except those identified as needing an alternate assessment. All students must participate in state testing in their third year regardless of how many credits they've earned. While 22-23 subject area results for NSCAS ACT show slight increases from 21-22, ACT scores across our high schools remain below pre-pandemic baseline levels. We do provide many supports for our students in preparation for the ACT. Staff from curriculum and instruction support, counseling, and the research division collaborate to prepare students for post-high school success through engaging in rigorous coursework, taking part in a wide range of career exploration opportunities, building on existing strengths, working with adults to plan for college, career, and civic life, gaining volunteer experiences, and participating in activities of interest and beyond the classroom. Additionally, the pre-ACT provides a practice experience similar to taking the ACT. This was first administered in 2018. In summary, NSCAS is used for the status, growth, and nonproficiency measures within AQuest, Nebraska's accountability classification system. Students in kindergarten through eighth grade are growing in ELA math and in science. ELA proficiency improved 10%, math 12%, and science proficiency improved 6% between 21-22 and 22-23. Across our secondary schools, we continue to have work to do in proficiency and in growth. The ALPA 21 summative assessment is made up of four language domain subtests, listening, reading, speaking, and writing. For each domain, student performance is classified into levels one to five based on each domain's scale score. The domain profile determines the overall proficiency level, classifying students as emerging, progressing, or proficient in their language acquisition. The top five home languages in the Omaha Public Schools who took the ALPA 21 assessment were Spanish, Korean, Somali, Nepali, and Khwan Ho Baal. As you can see, the number of English learners in the Omaha Public Schools has increased over the last five years. This graphic depicts the four-year trend representing overall proficiency levels for K-12 students at the district level. And just a reminder that an increase in newcomers often means an increase in emerging proficiency levels as students are just learning the language. ALPA data is also broken down by level for the 2022, by grade level, I'm sorry, for the 2022-2023 school year. Students are proficient when they have attained a level of English language skill necessary to independently produce, interpret, and collaborate on grade-level content-related academic tasks in English. This is indicated on ALPA 21 by attaining a profile level of four or higher in all domains. Reminder that the domains are reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Once proficient on ALPA 21, students can be considered for reclassification. This graphic shows language acquisition levels across the domains of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Schools also receive this data and use it to support individuals and classroom instruction. A student's proficiency level on their first ALPA assessment sets their baseline. This baseline level will be compared against the student's proficiency level on each year they take the assessment on whether or not they are on track to become proficient. The proficiency determinations of emerging and progressing are broken down into five categories. AQuest uses this on-track measure as part of the accountability system, and so basically students need to stay on their line, tracking on their trajectory of growing each year to be considered on track. EL services, English learner services, in the Omaha Public Schools are designed to help students learn English so that they will be able to meet academic standards, succeed in school, and graduate from high school. We offer four types of English language support services. Newcomer services develop beginning English skills and core academic skills designed to meet the needs of students who often have limited formal or interrupted schooling. In-class supports or sheltered instruction is designed to support students with academic content and make academic content more comprehensible. English language development provides targeted instruction during a course or in a small group. And dual language provides instruction in both English and Spanish. In summary, the Omaha Public Schools continues to welcome more and more English learners each year. The ALPA 21 assessment is a key indicator in the AQuest classification system and measures students' progress toward proficiency through that on-track measure. In 2022-2023, 3% more students were measured as on-track with a 3% reduction in the off-track measure in OPS. Just a reminder from the beginning of the presentation that state classifications and federal designations are independent of one another. All OPS schools were recently classified into need support to improve, good, great, or excellent, depending on the performance in the measures we've discussed this evening. This screen gives a graphic overview of how the classification system works. The status score is based on the percent of proficient students in ELA and math. In that transitions category on the left, four- and seven-year cohort graduation data is calculated. In the middle section, opportunities and access, chronic absenteeism, and progress toward English language proficiency are weighted. In the last, or orange, column on the right, schools are given a score and classified based on a growth measure, the percent of scores that showed an increase and then a reduction of their nonproficient scores. And then, of course, science proficiency is also weighed to give a final classification of excellent, great, good, or need support to improve. You can find all of Nebraska's education data, along with school and district snapshots and classifications, on the Education Profile website, which we've highlighted here. The summative results we've shared this evening reveal progress and the results of commitment and hard work, while also shedding light on areas where we must continue to focus our efforts. School leaders and district supports alike are monitoring common key metrics such as on-track, map scores, and attendance in support of improvement. Our aligned understanding of effective schools, measurement, and quality instruction through the learning framework supports the rapid growth we all envision for our schools. Overall, as Mr. Ray shared in his opening remarks, 28 schools improved their ratings at least one level. 19 schools moved out of need support to improve. Pecot Elementary moved from good to excellent, while Franklin, Benson West, and Florence improved two classification levels from need support to improve to great. Overall, our district has more good, great, and excellent schools and eight fewer schools in need support to improve. We celebrate these leaders and teachers, as well as all of our schools who work tirelessly to serve the learning of children in our district, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions, Scully's? Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you, President Head. Excuse me. Slide five didn't say that it was OPS, but I'm assuming that that is not a statewide, but rather OPS figures. Yeah.
Getting there?
That one.
Yes.
Thank you. It's very heartwarming, so I just wanted to confirm that those are our numbers and they're looking good. On slide eight, it looked like everybody got better except grade six. Do they have, was it slide eight? There you go. Grade six saw less of a jump than the other ones. Is there a new curriculum that starts at grade six? Or, I mean, I was just, I'm just curious. Everybody else did so much better. Grade six improved, but not by as much, so I was wondering if there's something in our grade six curriculum or anything you can think of?
I don't think so. I just think it's a transition year. We have students at both elementary and middle schools. And so we continue to, as I said in the beginning, the results really help us focus in on what we need to work on, and so that's a clear space that we need to focus our attention from a school improvement perspective.
Great. I know that our ACT scores, you pointed them out, they were on slide, the next slide, I think, slide nine. They showed, we don't, lots of room for improvement. On the other hand, I am a firm believer that our ACT scores reflect the interest our students have in taking the ACT test in the first place. And I'm, from personal experience, know that kids who are not planning on going to college really don't care how they do on the ACT test. It doesn't affect their grades, it doesn't affect their graduation, it's just, you know, school pride, OPS pride is the only motivator there. Is there any way to distinguish our scores so that our college-bound ACT takers are separated out from the scores, if only for purposes of showing that there's a difference and that our teachers are doing as good a job as anybody else is? It's just the interest of the students involved. Do they ever distinguish between college and non-college bound?
So at the beginning of the ACT, all test takers fill out some demographic information, some interest information, and their future plans. And so our counselors are able to use that information to support students in their strategy, their next steps. And I think we want to ensure that all of our students have every opportunity, and so we continue to support our schools in ensuring that students are doing their best and that the ACT opens doors for them, if those are doors that they want to have opened.
No, I agree 100%. And I know that Mr. Head was involved with that decision, legislated it, and I applaud it because I think having every student take it does, as you say, position them to be able to apply to college. I'm just thinking about as ACT scores are compared across states or districts or whatever, that there's a distinction presumably. So that demographic information is never broken out at the score level, right?
We do not currently do that. I would say that of the states where all students or greater than 90% of the students take the test, Nebraska ranks right behind, I believe, Wisconsin and Utah, so we do fairly well in the space of states where all students take the test.
I'm so glad you said that. Dr. McFarland and I were talking about that before the board meeting, and I said I had heard that we were like second, I think, second or third when compared to the states where everybody's required to take it, and I think that is certainly to be celebrated. And my last question is, when you get to that classification of excellent, great, good, you may have said this, but I'm sure I'll be able to hear you better when we are in our new and improved board room. But who does that classification? Because you showed the three components of it, but who is it that looks at those and says you need improvement in your excellent?
The Nebraska Department of Education. This is their accountability system. The AQuest tenets use these measures as weighted indicators to determine these classification levels.
I think it's the next slide that showed the, yeah, that one. Do they look at those things to? Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Crackey?
I was going to ask the same question that has been asked, and that is to separate in the test-taking of the students in the sixth grade. I still think we need to do that for our own knowledge about those who are going to college and those who are not. college and those who are not. Not that we want the students to know that, but it would help us to know if there is that feeling, I don't care about this test, we've heard that story, or I care a great deal about this test. And I think that is happening, and so we put it all in a lump sum, but it needs to be separated so we know what we're doing. I need to have it, so I know what we're doing, so I can think about what we need to do as well as you can, too.
Ms. Morris.
Thank you, President Head. So I just had a question about the English Learner Services, that particular slide. So what does it mean as far as sheltered instruction?
So sheltered instruction is academic content for English learners where they receive language acquisition supports to make the content more understandable or comprehensible to them.
So it's a different way that we're trying to support them?
Yes.
Is all that means?
Yes.
Okay. And then I was curious, could you give me some examples of these newcomer services? Like, what do you mean by that?
Sure. So students that come to us maybe when they're a little older, who maybe have limited former schooling based on their past experiences, get specific supports to learn English prior to going in an academic course. So it's a specific support for new English learners who maybe have not had educational experiences in their background.
Okay. Thank you.
Or interrupted experiences.
Mr. Tealyn.
Thank you, Mr. Head. So I just want to make sure, I feel like I got some feedback. Okay. As I'm kind of drawing some conclusions from some of the charts and the data, lots of, lots of data, but averages sometimes are a little, you know, can be, hide some other things that are going on, right? And I think one of the things that I looked at, and I want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, if we look at slides seven and eight, that when you're looking at grade three in 2021 to 2022, that's essentially your, I mean, obviously we have kids that change, right? But that's your grade four in '22, '23, right? So, and we're also seeing increases from year to year for that cohort.
Yes.
Which I think is also something to look at and celebrate, right?
Yes.
Is that the cohort is doing better than they were the year prior.
Yes, and so these elementary students are going to become our middle school students, going to become our high school students, and so we're feeling very hopeful about the future. And in the report that you received, in the very last page, the appendix, has the individual school-based data by year, and in many schools you'll see double-digit, doubling increases of proficiency, which we're really excited about.
Fantastic. I think, kind of as a similar question, I think you kind of pointed it out in your summary on page, slide 18, but when you're comparing, comparing the kind of overall proficiency changes in the ELPA scores, the reason that on-track data presumably is part of the assessment is that that's a better way to track the changes, right? It doesn't, it takes, it takes the idea that we've got more students coming in or students leaving out of the picture, right? Is that accurate?
Yes, and so we, of course, do look at our proficiency. Sorry, is that my fault? Okay. We, of course, follow our proficiency, the proficiency in the domains. Our schools use that information to support classroom planning, school improvement planning. The AQuest metric that's used for classification is on-track. So the idea is we want to be supporting students to stay on their trajectory of growth across the emerging, all the way up through proficiency. And so I think in the report that you received, it shows how each level is sort of cut in half, and then students receive that score, and our goal is to keep them growing, keep them on their line, so to speak, while also, of course, getting them to proficiency over time.
Thank you for the way that you put this data together and the presentation. This is, I think, a really important, as we've continued to look at different assessments and look at the data, I think, continuing to keep us talking about it and presenting it in ways that we can digest, is digestible, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you to the research team who, as of last week at 10:00 a.m. on a Wednesday, had all of this together for all of us to make sense of.
Ms. Full.
Thank you for your presentation. My first question is, so I'm looking at slide 14, and I'm just looking at the trends, and I see kind of when they get to the middle school level and the high school level, their ELPA levels just tend to decline. And I see this phenomena happening among other measurements that we use to measure student success and how they're doing in the classroom. And so I feel like I need someone to help me understand why, as students get older, they struggle more in the classroom. Is there any explanations you could offer me as to why that maybe happens?
Sure. So I want to separate, what you're saying is true, absolutely, that as students matriculate, sometimes we see a drop-off in attendance, engagement, those kinds of things. True. This measure may not be, that phenomenon that you're seeing may not be because those students have stayed with us and they stop progressing. That may certainly be the case for some subset of them, but for some of these students, they may well be newcomers. And so the gap between their learned academic language, what they come in with, there's certainly a difference in what then is happening in school. So it may not be that, in this particular case, it's that they're falling off. It may well be that these are newcomers coming to us much later in their educational experience.
That makes sense. Yeah. Okay, thank you. My next question was, was there a goal for reducing the off-track measure? And if so, was it met? I know that there was the 3% reduction in off-track students, but did you initially set a goal for that?
That is not a goal. That is in our strategic plan of action.
Okay. Thank you. And my last questions are about the AQuest classifications. So the exact schools, they can be found on the Nebraska Education Profile?
Okay.
And so unfortunately, several of our schools moved to need support to improve, which is not great. And I'm just wondering, have you, have you looked at those schools? Like, what specifically, what parts of town were they in? Were there any specific changes to the schools and administration or other influences that may have caused that to happen?
A couple of things. Some of our schools that saw the greatest growth, and again, I would call your attention to the appendix, and then in our comments, some of our schools that have seen the greatest amount of growth were in North Omaha, and we're really proud of those leaders and teachers, communities and families, and the work that they've done. Some of the schools that took a step back, which it wasn't many, there used to be a metric in the state of Nebraska called the bump, which was in, you could, a school or a district could provide evidence of their work, and they would receive a bump up in classification. That was maintained, it was scheduled to go away, then the pandemic happened, they kept it for one year, which was last year, and this year they have gotten rid of that. And so schools didn't have the opportunity to submit that and get that bump up in classification. So it may well be that some of the schools that moved down into need support to improve, their scores actually went up, are growing, but they no longer receive that EBA bump that used to be a part of the classification system.
Okay. Thank you.
And we, of course, are looking at those schools and what the systems of support needs to be to get them continuing to accelerate their growth.
Okay. Have we given that feedback to the Department of Education about that whole bump process you just explained to me and how it's kind of skewing our data?
We are always in conversation with the Nebraska Department of Education around how systems impact our communities and our schools.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Krackey.
I wondered, you talked about the newcomers, and we know that the newcomers make a difference. Can you tell us the percent of increase, because you said they did increase, or could you give me a number of what the increase was?
Let's see, if I can find this slide, one second. So we do have the number of, it actually might be in the report that you received where it tells the number of English learners that are new to the district. We'll certainly get that to you, but it has increased over the last several years.
Yes, you did say that. So I was interested in the number, and I think that helps us a lot to understand the rest of the story.
Thank you. Yep. You're welcome.
Ms. Erdberger.
Thank you, President Head. I'm going to follow up a little bit on what Ms. Krackey was just asking and complete the question that I think that Ms. Full asked, which is back on slide 14. Ms. Full asked, you know, I mean, there is a noticeable downturn, if you will, in the level of proficiency as people get into eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grades. And your answer was, kind of followed up on what Ms. Krackey said, was that that might be reflecting the number of second language students that are coming in. I personally, without seeing any, you know, actual information, find it hard to imagine that our numbers of older students coming in with second language are actually impacting the percentages that much. So, you could prove me wrong, give me the data, but to the extent it really does reflect our ninth, 10th, and 11th, 12th grade proficiency, I know that our academies and pathways are working hard to get our students engaged, and that we hope to see that that's going to turn around. But what other sorts of things, when you see this data, does it tell you that we should be doing differently?
So I believe I have the answer to this question as well, as I'm looking at this. And so the, if you looked on the right-hand side of slide 13, it says the N, the total number. And so you can see in 2019, 2020, we had 9,526. And this year, or this last year, we assessed over 10,800 students. So that difference shows the difference in number of EL students, to Ms. Krackey's question. And then...
So what?
Yes. Right. And you also test out. When you reach proficiency, you are no longer classified as an EL student. So that's something to remember. In terms of your question, Ms. Erdnberger, about the falloff, I'm not suggesting that it's about numbers, it's the gap between academic language and what students are accessing in terms of the academic content and so forth, and their experience educationally, if that kind of makes sense. And then, as we look at this data, our school teams in their planning of their school improvement work are using this data, and in fact, at our principal's institute, Melissa Schroeder, our coordinator of assessment, and Jamie Kogwa, who's also back here, collaborated on a presentation around multilingual learners in instructional design and school improvement work to help our school leaders and those leadership teams understand this data at the school level, at the grade level, dissect what domain it is that we're seeing students most struggle in. Is it speaking? Is it reading? Is it writing? Where do we need the most support? And how do we build in those language acquisition supports into instruction through content and language objectives throughout the instructional day?
Thank you. I should have known that you were three steps ahead of me on looking at the data and analyzing it and figuring out what to do about it. So, thank you, and Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie for his assistance. Thank you very much. Excellent. I want to repeat what Mr. Tealyn said. I know you got all this data Wednesday, which in a normal week would be one thing, but the day before Thanksgiving is a whole nother thing. So, good job getting it all pulled together. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tealyn.
Thank you, Mr. Head. I just, I think maybe if we look at slide 14 as an example, I don't know if you have the answer to this question, or it goes a little bit to what Ms. Full had asked. I mean, these, this is not a longitudinal, right? This is our current snapshot. So, my question is, is this a normal curve? Is this what we, does this look like last year's or the year before that? Is this normal for, to have this kind of difference?
I'm not going to answer that. I think we probably, because we didn't prepare five-year or longitudinal data for this presentation.
And I think maybe that's my point, is that as we, as we try to start to ask those questions, those are really different questions than the data that's provided here.
Yes.
Important questions, but not necessarily the data that we have in front of us.
Right.
Thanks.
Ms. Cassley.
Thank you. At this point, I don't even know if I really have a question. We've had so many great questions. Thank you, though, for the presentation. As Mr. Tealyn said earlier, it's just how it's presented, you guys have, it's very easy to understand, and it's so important to keep, to keep our progress going and to keep us in track with our strategic plans. So, thank you for the presentation and all the information. I had a similar question to Ms. Krackey, just keeping in mind all the different English language learners. I wanted to know that number and that percentage, and you somewhat answered that. Can you tell us again, though, I know you mentioned the five top languages? What were those again? I was trying to jot them down. I had Spanish, Karen, and then I...
Nepali.
Lost the rest.
Let me find my slide before I...
I think it's so important for our public to keep in mind how many languages and the types of students that we serve in this district. It's incredible. But I missed all but two.
Spanish, Karen, Somali, Nepali, and Kwan Ho Bal, which is an indigenous Central American language.
Okay.
Mayan origin.
Thank you. And I think everything, I had a few other questions, but they've been answered. So, thank you so much again for all your work and this research staff.
All right. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none, thank you so much for the presentation and the information. We greatly appreciate it. Moving on, item J1B, College and Career Academies and Pathways, Freshman Academies, update with Ms. Susan Christopherson and Ms. Deanna Moise.
Can I, here me to go? As Annie switches that, we're going to be getting everyone the current list of all the winter concerts, if you'd like to enjoy some of the winter festivities. We look forward to sharing a list of those and some upcoming things that will be happening this winter season for you to continue to enjoy all the great work that's happening in our schools. Thank you. Good evening, Vice President Head, or, excuse me, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of our Board of Education, interim superintendent... members of our Board of Education, interim superintendent Mr. Ray in our community. We would like to extend our Freshman Academy presentation from October with some additional freshman data points. We will also share how data is used to support, support, clarify, and improve our implementation work, as well as monitor the progress of our students. Our commitment for implementing effective freshman supports is unwavering. The dedication of our teachers, leaders, schools, and district demonstrates we resoundingly understand the importance of creating school cultures where students believe they are valued, seen, and heard. While we are not perfect yet, we continue to strive for this outcome in keeping this in our mind daily. In September of 2021, a slide similar was presented to share the various metrics we would be monitoring as we committed ourselves to implementation related to college and career and academies and pathways. Our organizational values, mission, and vision keep us on a path for continuous improvement. Believing in the importance of continuous improvement during implementation, we have gathered feedback, sought input, processed learnings that impact our refinement. We believe data should be used in meaningful ways. A list of metrics is just a list. We want the metrics we monitor and utilize to have purpose, as this only helps to enhance our insight, our progress, and sometimes leads us to more wonderings. In working collaboratively with the Department of Accountability and School Improvement, we have explored how to best use the data from this slide and align it to the various stages of implementation. For effective implementation to occur, matching evidence-based practices assists with creating a systems approach. The practices clarify expectations, provide us guidance, and give us accountability to working collectively for implementation at all nine of our high schools. The arrow directs the data from leading to lagging indicators. At this time, Deanna Moise, Executive Director of Secondary Education, will share data specific to freshman attendance, on-track, GPA, and course marks. Sometimes people refer to those as grades. We call them course marks. Some of the information may look and sound familiar, as it has been included within other presentations, including the Strategic Plan of Action Workshop on October 30, and is also included within the reports that have been provided as receipts of report tonight. In our collaboration with the Department of Accountability and School Improvement, annual reports will now have the inclusion of academies, college and career academies and pathways data, also including our Freshman Academy data. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deanna.
Thank you, Susan. Attendance is an important data point at all grade levels. The information shared on this slide is specific to the last four years of attendance data for our freshman classes. Absenteeism is least pronounced in grade nine as compared to our other grade levels. As the chart shows, our chronic absenteeism rates are stabilizing as we recover from the unique circumstances of the pandemic. The data you see from 2019-20 and 2020-21 may also be inflated results due to the abbreviated school year in 1920 and the 3-2 model and options in 2020, in 2020 and 2021. Absenteeism alone does not tell the story of success or non-success. Each student has unique needs and stories. Kami Pacota shared the same data at the Strategic Plan of Action Workshop, and the supports Kami and the work of Student and Community Services support Freshman Academy teams as they continue to promote and encourage all students to strive for 95. This slide provides information that allows a deeper dive into the Freshman Academy aspects of the attendance and absenteeism report that, as mentioned before, is included as receipt of report tonight. Attendance and learning go hand in hand, which is why all high schools include attendance goals in their school improvement plans. Freshman Academy and attendance teams regularly use the real-time attendance dashboards to monitor and intervene in support of students and families. Freshman Academy team students, whenever possible, are cohorted and scheduled so that the students within a team share the same English, science, and social studies teachers. This team, which can also include other teachers, administrators, and school counselors, meet regularly. As they meet, they alternate reviewing student data with short and long-term curriculum planning. Grades, as well as attendance, are data points that are reviewed and discussed at these meetings. The on-track report that we introduced in October is assisting with these data discussions, and we are already seeing team leaders take action with the report mechanism to assist in determining what supports are needed and for whom they are needed. Noted here are key points from the grade distribution data just shared on the previous slide. We have the same grade distribution visual, so similar to this one, available to each school and their instructional leaders after each grading period. School leaders can view and reflect on this data and cross-reference it with other report information that allows them to have follow-up conversations with staff as needed. These continuous efforts with just-in-time data are where we experience the most purposeful use of these metrics. We will now review our freshman on-track metric. We originally introduced the updated on-track metric and definition on October 23. At that time, we reported the 2022-23 on-track for our freshman class as 51.9%. As we continue to collaborate and gain feedback, we were able to identify how to more accurately count PE credits versus elective credits, since some of our students select band and JROTC as ninth and 10th graders. So with this updated information, the 2022-23 freshman on-track rate is now actually 58.1%. And so that is reflected in the on-track report tonight. With NLL included, the 2022-23 freshman class on-track percent then increased to 63.8%. Oh, yes. The light blue-gray bars on this graphic show the end-of-year on-track percentages with those PE adjustments. But again, it doesn't include the NLL data. This graphic also shows on-track, off-track rates within the four core credit categories, English, math, science, and social studies. Over 70% of ninth-grade students were on-track in each of the core subjects, with electives having the highest on-track rate at 85.2%. Some English learners must take English language learner courses prior to taking on-track, credit-bearing English course like English 1.2. About 300 grade-nine EL students were off-track at the end of the 22-23 year and had this as one of their reasons for being off-track. Note that this on-track English learner information for high school students is on-track for graduation, which is different than the on-track data shared earlier by Chief Kramer, which is unique to that alpha growth, being on-track towards their individual English proficiency. About 27% of all off-track students in ninth grade were only off-track in one credit category, and 21% were only off-track by one or fewer credits. About 40 to 55% of students who were off-track in the core subjects were only off-track by one credit. So this is one of the reasons why we were able to make those marked gains with next-level learning, as many students designated as off-track only needed to recover one semester or one credit in a core course. The notes on this slide continue to share how on-track data is being utilized. It is important that we, as we collect, share, and discuss data with instructional leaders and staff that has purpose that directly impacts teaching and learning. As seen here, academy teams, along with freshmen seminar and advisement teachers, support our ninth-grade student ownership in staying and getting back on track. One example of this is a student reflection that was generated by a Freshman Academy lead. Students at that school are now asked to complete a monthly self-check-in that includes grades and attendance in each class. It also includes journal components about goal-setting and identifying resources for supports. This is a direct result of the staff having the right access to the right data at the right time, which is a direct result of our on-track report being collaboratively developed across our district's multiple departments, including school staff. While we do calculate freshman grade point averages, or GPAs, it's not a metric that is a focus for our Freshman Academy team discussions. As alone, it does not assist in identifying targeted supports for individual or groups of students. Our current efforts in this data domain will continue to be focused on course mark success, which results in those on-track rates. As this slide is shared, Slide 6 can serve as a reference, the one with the the blue bars and then the yellow bar. Slide 6 showed the grade distributions for freshman English, science, and social studies. The bars on this slide conversely mirror the yellow failure bars from the data on that Slide 6. For example, the lower failure rates in 2019-20 from that earlier slide correlate to the longer or higher value bars on this slide's GPA and credit graphs. Similarly, the almost equal bar failure rates from Slide 6 in 2021-22 and 2022-23 correlate again to those almost equal GPA and credit amounts on this slide for those same years. Therefore, without reporting or digging in deep to GPA data specifically, we know that if we hone our work on leading indicators such as course pass rates, we can impact a lagging indicator such as GPA. An item of note from the previous slide on GPA is that in regard to freshman GPA, an average end-of-the-year credits earned is that all have largely recovered to nearly pre-pandemic levels. The work of Freshman Academy success teams follows our planned due check act cycle for continuous improvement. The vision of these success teams is to plan together, provide quality classroom experiences with the support of high-quality instructional materials, and the learning framework. As teaching and learning occurs, teams then meet to check on the progress. This is where our dashboards and reports and in-class checks for understanding assist in real-time data usage to determine how best to support our students. Professional learning communities, or PLCs, at this stage also focus on the third bullet question, how will we respond when students do not learn? Based on the review of data and student learning, targeted supports can then be determined and implemented. And if needed, referrals for more intensive needs can occur during that act stage of the improvement cycle. From surveys conducted specific to academy implementation, 80% of Freshman Academy teachers indicate strong awareness of student performance. It is important to note that the success of these Freshman Academy teams is also dependent on their availability for teachers to meet during duty hours as those teams. As Susan mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, annual reports will have the inclusion of college and career academies and pathway and freshman academy-related data. Shared here, with the support of the Department of Accountability and School Improvement, are the anticipated dates of those reports. Additionally, you can expect to see reports on graduation and dropout, as well as dual enrollment and advanced academics as receipt of report in January. As outlined in our College and Career Academies and Pathways update in May of 2023, we plan to return in January with the information on, with information on industry certifications, advanced academic diplomas, graduation rate, dual enrollment, and post-secondary information. As we continue to highlight the work of Freshman Academies alongside the implementation of college and career academies and pathways, I would be remiss not to give a shout-out to Benson High and their Design and Construction Academy, and Bryan High's Urban Agricultural Academy, that were both recently awarded Model Status Academy recognition by the National Career Academy Coalition. Happened just last week. Additionally, Bryan High School has achieved the remarkable distinction of being recognized as a Model, Model Status Academy with distinction. This esteemed recognition is a testament to the unwavering commitment of both Benson and Bryan High Schools to provide exceptional career-focused education, equipping students with the skills and knowledge to elevate expectations for their future. And the same, it is the same organization, the National Career Academy Coalition, or NCAC, whose national standards of practice we utilize as a tool and guide in the development of successful academies and pathways. We look forward to many more future celebrations at these schools and others as we continue our phased implementation.
Thank you. Questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdnberger? Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to thank you for bringing this presentation tonight. It's responsive to some additional questions that some board members had, and I really appreciate how it communicates the administration's willingness and eagerness to work together with the board and help us understand everything that's going on. So I really appreciate that. The on-track, so I want to go a little bit back to our previous board meeting about the new on-track metric that we are using. One question that I didn't ask at the time is whether the metric that we were using before, if there's a standard metric that is used in education in general for on-track, or if we were already kind of using our own version of an on-track graduation rate?
So there are multiple definitions. There is not like one set national definition of what it means to be on-track. It is highly focused on those core courses. Some places, it's Bs are better in core courses that are a focus. Sometimes they allow for one core course failure during your freshman year to stay and maintain or be considered on-track. Sometimes we were using a definition of being on-track, meaning that we had a plan to get all of our credits by the time we graduate. So there are multiple definitions. We chose the rigorous one so that we could intervene early and often versus the one where it does allow for one core course failure.
Now, I do want to get to that that point that you're making. But to just go back for a second. So the, there really is, it's not really comparable across districts, for instance, right? But even if we were using the same definitions based on our graduation criteria, right, we would probably have different, something, something, it was going to affect how that, that.
Yeah, and not, not all districts have the same graduation requirements, right? They are similar, but things may be slightly different as far as electives or when things happen. So there is no, even in Nebraska, there isn't a set on-track graduation data point.
Right. So there's, I mean, so there's not a standard that we're not adhering to. We've decided to use a metric that's most useful to us.
Correct.
And so, and the point that you were starting to make there is that the, we've decided to do is use a metric that is most useful to us for early intervention versus, we kind of talked a little bit about predictiveness, right, of whether it's a predictive measure versus a.
Yes.
A good useful measure for us in the moment.
Correct.
And we chose to use that useful intervention measure. So then I think the other question that I have is about, I'm going to use GPAs because I think that it, there's, there's an obvious reason that it's, it's certainly a lagging. It's probably, I don't, I don't remember if, I would expect it. It's probably, I don't, I don't remember if, I would expect it to be on that lagging indicator sort of end of the arrow, right? But I kind of want to understand how we do intend to use it. And I, and I also maybe want to frame a little bit that you are concentrating rightly on how we use this, this data to intervene. It's similar to our On Track measure, right? But I also want to think about it in, in how we measure the success of our program, right? Are, is our freshman On Track programming, the things, interventions that we are doing, are they working? And I think when we first had this presentation, I think one of the, one of the, one of the many things that was on there was that GPAs might increase. I just want to see if that is still something we think is valid, or if we're still kind of planning that, or how we intend to fit that in.
GPA, right, course mark, as course marks increase, right, less failures, we will see that GPA increase, so it's always there. We do still use it for recognition, for honor roll. It is a kind of more fluid one where we don't want to, at the moment, we want to get a little, our feet solid in this On Track metric so that we get to a point where we're like, okay, Cs are good, but Bs are better. And so while we know that, like, that's in the, in the distance as a marker that we can look at to really focus on, okay, right? We're no longer worried about whether our kids are passing or failing. We're worried about, are they getting the As and Bs versus Cs and Ds? We want to get there. I just don't know that we're there yet.
I think, and I think I read that in, in some of the presentation materials, and I really appreciate that. So I think that makes a lot of sense. So I think the next question is, and maybe you don't have that answer tonight, but how, what metrics are we going to use four, maybe five years from now to look back and say, are the, are the strategies that we're using for freshman On Track working? Or are they, are they giving us the outcomes that we, that we were hoping for? What metrics are we going to use to look back and make that determination? Is GPA one of them, or are there others that we should be looking?
The greatest one would be our On Track measure. That's what we're focused on, is to make sure that we are attaining credits towards that graduation because then we will make sure that we're improving our graduation rate. So our baseline is really, right, like, we now have this set definition of what it means to be on track as a freshman. And so next year, when we get our 23, 24 freshman class data, right, we want it to show marked improvement from what we've defined as this baseline data, right? If it goes down, we need to really say, what, what's happening here? And then celebrate if that improves. It's also allowing us to say sooner rather than later, like, now we can look at that On Track dashboard right after the end of the semester and start making plans with students if they do need to recover those credits, so that we're not waiting till their junior year, or we're not waiting until they're four or five credits behind that we're doing as we did last year in next-level learning, and getting students caught up so that we're not creating snowballs for students.
So I think if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're saying is this metric that we now, we put a lot of work into it, right? We think it's a rigorous and solid methodology.
Yes.
That that's probably our best measurement of our success for our freshman Academy, our freshman On Track efforts. Is that accurate?
I, I would say yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you, Mr. Head. Following up to the tail end of what Mr. Teal was talking about, I understand the notion of the On Track being, establishes our foundation. The question then is, a person is on track if they, whether they get a D or an A, right? I mean, if they earn the, yeah, if they earn the credit, they will show up as being on track. The question is, how do we know how well our programs are doing? And is On Track because everybody's gotten a D? Or are, you know, are we on track because everybody's gotten an A? So in some respects, I'm wondering, GPA is going to be an average for us, but the allocation among the A, B, C, D slide that you showed us over time, presumably we would want to see the As. I mean, first of all, we have to get everybody on track, completely get that. But presumably, over time, we're going to want to see the A number getting bigger and the D number getting smaller.
Yes.
In a perfect world.
Yes. I mean, there, it's, right, it's, it's a challenge, right? Like, if we could say, everybody needs to get an A, and we can make that data happen. But that's not necessarily what, what, what we intend with the data. So we continue to look at those course marks. Trust me. We look at the course marks. And we, right, it will be a metric, it's just not kind of our, our key leverage metric at the moment.
Yep. No, I understand, because your On Track is going to lead to your graduation, and that is our priority there. Did I understand, back on Slide 8, speaking of On Track, the chart there shows the fifty-eight point one percent On Track, but in fact, the recalculation that that number is not fifty-eight point one, but sixty-three point eight? Is that what you're telling us?
If you include the next-level learning.
Okay. I, I thought that's what you said.
So our baseline, so we just want to keep that baseline as, where are we? At the end of that full, regular, two-semester course year? And then, right, we have those markers to celebrate if we need to, what's happening over next-level learning? And so that's why that On Track will, report will just show that year. And then I believe there's a note in the On Track report about, that calls out next-level learning.
Got it. So we're doing apples to apples, so on and so forth. I would point out that the On Track with our electives, obviously, are the highest, arguably, because those are the classes the students enjoy the most, which gets full circle back around for my recurring plug for our academies and pathways. Hopefully, our kids are enjoying those classes. Did you say that that monthly check-in is only one school that's doing that?
Well, that's the beauty of all using the same data, is that now we are having these collaborative conversations about how to utilize the data. So as soon as we had a meeting and the Academy lead said, hey, I've got this check-in we're using, all of the other schools said, yes, can you please share that? So then we have a shared SharePoint folder where that goes in, and then they kind of rebrand it, and it starts to travel elsewhere.
I was actually hoping that that's what you were going to tell me. Thank you. It's like, you know, yeah, it's like getting, there's a reason you get on the scale every morning, how am I doing? So that's, that's, and I know from talking to freshmen that they, they are clueless as to how they're doing. So I think that's brilliant. So whoever thought of it, kudos. And thank you very much. Appreciate the breadth of this report. I'm going to just point out, one of the other metrics on that very first slide was participation, extracurricular participation. I did ask about that, and my understanding is that it's, it's too early to be record, be tracking that, but that is something that you're out there collecting. And I just wanted to make that clear, that I understand that that particular one is coming. It's just not there yet.
And participation is also a fluid measure at the moment, whether it's, is it pathway participation, extracurricular participation, CTSO participation? So we do have plans for capturing those different ones that doesn't employ or overburden our coaches and sponsors to spend all of their time tracking what students are doing rather than actually interacting with students. And so we're trying to find our balance in that world of extracurricular tracking. So that's one kind of similar to where we were with On Track, to where kind of everybody was pulling it a little bit different. And we got that kind of in a place where we're good and we can collaborate on what that looks like and pull the data similarly. Extracurricular is our next tackle to where we know people are tracking it, but we're, how they're determining that interest, right? Is it because I showed up once, or because I'm in the yearbook and I dedicate, right, five hours a day, every day?
For four years.
For four years to earn the Cornhusker Award. So that is a work in progress.
Thank you. As a former teacher, I appreciate your sensitivity to that. I made eye contact with the OEA president, and I'm sure she likes the fact that we're not going to try and add another thing for the teachers to keep track of. So thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Full?
Thank you for the presentation. I think this is less of a question and more of a comment when we talk about the, the metrics, the On Track metrics and the GPA. To be honest, just listening to this, I, I get worried that we're not using GPA more seriously. And I know that, you know, we need to make sure that students are on track so they can graduate. But I think more importantly, what we should be prioritizing is the conceptualization and the understanding of the things that they're learning in class. So when they graduate, they can actually take those tools on to when, you know, they go to college, or start a career, or, you know, start a business, whatever they want to do. That worries me to a large extent. And so I know that currently, we are prioritizing graduation rates. I personally think we should be prioritizing understanding and conceptualizing the things that we're teaching our students every single day. Because the feedback that I get from parents all the time is, well, you know, kids graduate and they don't know how to do algebra. And they don't know, you know, their US history like they're supposed to. And that's so problematic, and I hear it constantly. And so I understand that graduation rates are our priority, but I would push back and say that, again, conceptualizing these ideas that we teach every single day in the classroom is much, much more important than a graduation rate, in my opinion. So that's just what I wanted to offer, and if you'd like to respond, you can go ahead and do that, but you don't have to.
So yes, absolutely. That conceptualization is a little harder to capture, right? Like, people like to see data points. And so that, what you're speaking to is like, that conceptualization and that understanding is really the power of a PLC. The bullets there, which are really hard to read from this far away, are the four critical questions that our course teams are to focus on when they discuss and plan for conceptual understanding and learning, which is, what do we want them, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? How are we going to know if they know it? So what are we going to do for checks for understanding? What do our assessments look like? And then I call it my money question, which is that question three, which is, what are we going to do if they don't learn it? And so it's really having that time to meet as teams so that they can say, what are we going to do as a team? If we look at our data and we see not everyone has grasped this standard or concept, that is a high-need concept for success at the next level. So we are focused on that in our PLCs, and we look at those course marks and have those discussions. It's just a little harder to capture in a, in an overall end data point.
Thank you. I just wanted to express how important that is to me and to my community.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to just follow up and maybe respond to Ms. Full. If I had a dime for every time one of my former students on Facebook said, why didn't anybody ever tell me this? Then teaching would have been easy, because I might, I would have had my salary as a teacher, and then I would be able to make a lot of money on my Facebook posts because the fact that a student doesn't remember it does not mean it's not being taught. Just got to give a shout-out to the teachers. There was something that happened the other, oh, I think it was the Palestine-Israel conflict, which was a big part of my geography class. And I had so many students go, nobody ever told me this was a problem. Anyway, never mind. I digress. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
I completely agree with you, just because, you know, a student says that they don't know it, doesn't mean that the teacher wasn't teaching it. So, yes. But that also goes to, and this is not even necessarily under the control of the teachers, the curriculum that we're teaching, and the ways that we're teaching it. Because we do tell our teachers the way that they can teach. And I know those are, you know, state standards, those are also standards set by the district as well. And some of those things are under control, under our control. And so if the ways that we are engaging our students are not leading to them understanding the material, that is problematic and something that should be tracked. And like I said, there are state standards, there are district standards that tell teachers how they can teach, when they can teach, how many minutes they have to teach, like, we, we also have to take those things into account, if you understand what I'm, I'm saying. Just because they teach it doesn't mean that they're teaching it in a way that the students feel engaged with and feel like they're actually getting something out of it, and that it pertains to them and what they want to learn about. So that's my response.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Head. I'm not really sure how to phrase my question. First of all, though, I want to say, Mrs. Kristofferson, you said something in the very beginning that kind of got me thinking here tonight. You said, data, we want to do things with our data that's meaningful. And I think in both of our presentations tonight, we can see that data is, you can just have data and what do you do with it? But I think we're really seeing in both presentations tonight that our data, we are trying to do things that are meaningful with it. We are trying to use it to grow and progress. And so thank you both for, for the work here. Like I said, I don't know how to phrase my question, but I see here that we, we talk about our nineteen twenty, nineteen nineteen, nineteen twenty year, our pandemic year. I look back and, and looking at all the rates, and it just kind of all comes flooding back of how we went remote. We went, you know, we had to adjust, adjust things for our students who were, you know, learning remotely. We had to adjust grading scales, all that, all of that, that had to be done. At what point do we not, this is why I don't know how to phrase it, at what point do we not use, are we not looking at that COVID, those COVID numbers? Do we follow students from like seventh grade to ninth grade? I mean, I guess at what point do those numbers become, do they cease to be comparable? I don't know really how to phrase my question. Does that make sense?
No. I have to say, every time we type the word pandemic, we all just have a reaction to it. I think it's because we were looking at some trends of where we're at. And we're also trying to see where were we at pre, so that we know, at least giving us a starting point of where we want to make sure that we're moving toward. We can't not acknowledge that it was there, because it definitely impacted us in a lot of different ways. I think as the further we go out, it's also just acknowledging we're making the right gains and we're doing the right things. And I think we're measuring it from where we were at prior to where we are working towards, to grow towards next, if that makes sense. And so I do know that there were some conversations with us as we looked at those slides, and to even type the word was not wanting to go back there and relive any of that, but also to just acknowledge the fact that part of the reason we put in the freshman Academy was recognizing what our students had been through prior, and how we need to make sure that we're working very diligently and thoughtfully in moving us forward beyond that. So it's not using it as, but just making sure the cognizant awareness when you look at that data, that it was there. And I think we're moving away from that, is that's, is that's our biggest takeaway as we look at where we're growing.
And I think it, I mean, all of the data here shows that we are trending upward from that. So I guess we can use that experience to show our growth and to continue on that positive path. Makes sense. Kind of a strange question, but
No, I get it.
I know. It's on our minds. Thank you.
Ms. Juarez?
So I have a question, and I'm not really sure if you So I have a question and I'm not really sure if you have data for my question. But I'm concerned about the involvement of the parents when I look at all this data. You know, it's like, do we actually still have conferences for the ninth graders? How often do we have conferences? What are the attendance rates of the conferences? I mean, I feel like we're getting all of this data, but I really don't know about the family support aspect, you know? And are the statistics really good that there is good family support with these students? Or is it really bad? I feel like it's a picture that's not being revealed to us to try to understand some of this stuff. Because I really have big concerns about this absenteeism, you know? And I just want to know, what are we going to do to try to, you know, get this to improve? I don't, I mean, I always went to school. I'm sure I've said that before. I just don't understand this.
I think it's something that we're continuously looking at and partnering alongside Student and Community Services on what does that look like? And also what was the engagement before? What might it look like? And it might look differently now. We've just done some exploration of some current research articles that actually talks about the importance of how we're communicating things even to the families. So what might be some conversation starters to ask your students about what their school day is? And it's not that parents aren't caring and not wanting to know. Sometimes it's just knowing the right question to ask to open up that conversation. And I think that there's some things that we can continue to explore, to continue to engage. And I think just because a parent might not necessarily be present at parent-teacher conferences, it doesn't necessarily reflect that they're not caring how their student is doing. And so I think we have to think about how we might measure that a little bit differently, whether it's just, it's not just about attending those. I think the conversations at home or even in the car. I think about the number of conversations I had with my own children in the car. I'm sure they weren't always appreciative of all those conversations, but they were happening. And I think it's how are we helping, help, how are we helping? Because we are evolving in the community. And so how do we continue to reach out and find the right ways to do that? And the nice thing is we have some great information as we work with district communications and also Student and Community Services that we can continue to explore those. I think that's.
Well, I agree with you because I think that, you know, you can communicate with parents, parents in a variety of ways, you know? And then I think about all the languages that exist in our schools. And, you know, just that aspect alone, you know, is a challenge. And I just think that, you know, are we making the phone calls besides however the conferences are? Is there plenty of emails going out? I mean, I just want to have a better understanding of that aspect to sort of comprehend what's going on with these stats. Thank you.
Mr. Ray.
I hope it never comes across that the district is blaming COVID when we talk about COVID because we've been very deliberate about not making excuses for any of the data that we've shown. It will be a reality in, in our approach and our constant willingness and openness about sharing data. I mean, if you think about it, 1819 was the last traditional school year without masks or a late start or a 3-2 model. 2223 was then the next year where we had no masks or late starts. So I hope it never comes across that we're making excuses. It is a reality of what you see in the data. And we'll, you'll see this as we present ongoing. You'll see those flips in the 1920 data, the 2021 data. And it's just important to, to understand where we were. And so I just, I hope it never comes across as us making excuses because we're very aware of the data and how it impacted things. And we're committed to moving forward.
Ms. Krackey.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, for your comment about the COVID because we see that all the time. And I, I'm like you, we need to discount the idea that COVID is responsible for everything because that is not true. And then I want to know, on our conferences, are we making them accessible to those without a car? Are they able to meet at their high school or somewhere else and get on the bus and get to the conferences in the elementary schools in that manner or vice versa? Are we doing that? Are we providing that bus pickup? We used to do that, I know.
And there are, other than just physically being in person, there are other opportunities that allow Zoom meetings, phone calls. So we, as a school district and teachers and administrators, are more than happy to work with individual families to make sure that whatever accessibility needs to be provided can be provided. And so.
But I really think that there's something to be said about being there in person and seeing the parent in front of you and talking with them. And it's kind of more gracious, it's kind, you hear a lot of things. It's a more friendly type of atmosphere. And so I just hope we're providing that for some of the people to think they would like to do that. So are we? I don't know. Who wants to answer me? Are we providing that? It was, we providing the opportunity for the parent who really wants to make a in-person visit with their conference rather than Zoom and telephone and the other methods that we have.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Teachers do an amazing job of connecting with parents during parent-teacher conferences, outside of parent-teacher conferences. As a fifth-grade teacher, I did that. Teachers that are here in the audience do that without being told or instructed to do that. Jane, of course, did it, apparently. If you look at her Facebook, not so much. But we do make constant efforts to make accommodations for parents.
Remember, my comment is that if they couldn't come, I would come to their house and we would meet with them. And that did work very well. They came very often.
Mr. Smith.
It just does work.
Thank you. So back to the kind of on-track thing. It's more of a statement and maybe a small question in there. If the students come to us and the numbers don't go up, like initially, could that, could that be the baseline that we know this is where we're getting our freshmen at? And by the end of the year, that's where we want to see the growth. So if they come in next year and it's exactly, the exact same as this, this year, I just want to say it's not a fail, like the academies aren't working. But give us a year to get to the end so we can measure that growth for that cohort.
Yes. And with the on-track metric, not only can we like compare our freshman work from the 2223 year to the 2324 year. I feel like sometimes I'm already living the 2026, 27 years. So I have to pause and remember what year we are actually in. But we can also now like track those cohorts. I think somebody mentioned that in their question about the AQUEST data, right? Like, are you comparing apples to apples or years to years, right? But if you look at those same cohorts of students as they progress. And so we follow and look at that data as well as how are we doing with that same group as they move from ninth grade to 10th grade, 10th grade to 11th grade and towards graduation.
All right. Any other questions, colleagues? Seeing none. Thank you so much, both of you, for the presentation. We greatly appreciate it.
Thanks.
Moving on, next item, item J1C, Legislative Committee Update with Ms. Full.
Thank you. I'll keep it short and sweet. Our last legislative meeting was, we were just following up about previous conversations that we've had, monitoring potential legislation that might be introduced, talking about legislation we might be interested in pursuing. We also talked about just making sure that we're meeting with our legislators and our policymakers so we can build our relationships with them and they can understand us on a fundamental level. So when we come to them asking for something or so forth, they already have a good understanding. They, you know, have been to our schools, they've seen it themselves. Like, I feel like that is a very important part of making sure that we are successful legislatively. And so that is the legislative update. I don't think I require a motion to pass or whatever the term is.
Nope, it's just an information item. Do we have any questions, though, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Thank you for the update. Moving to action items, item J2A, Approval of the Academic Calendar for the 2425 School Year with Mr. Scott Schmidt-Bonnie.
Good evening, President Head and Vice President Smith, members of our board and interim Superintendent Ray. Tonight's presentation will be served in two parts. The first is a review of survey data from our stakeholders. And the second, our proposed changes since you last saw the calendar, as well as new additions integrated into the calendar. So tonight is the final step in the process of finalizing our 202425 academic calendar for the Omaha Public Schools. However, much work will occur hereafter. First, the amazing Shelley Duteal in our District Operational Services, Prinning and Publication Division, will stage a calendar that is approved tonight in two versions, one for staff and one for families in the community, both meeting ADA compliance needs. Then exceptional staff in IMS and CIS will work to create calendars in campus and/or to support the creation of cycle days and other calendar-aligned efforts. Then staff in Human Resources will create many-duty calendars for specific roles and positions in our district that align to the academic calendar and our negotiated agreements with our labor partners. But there's still more. School and program leadership will support from their, with support from their principal supervisors, will begin planning content for training days that they will now be afforded again. And lastly, many families will begin determining additional childcare needs if they have those, as well as vacation and other family opportunities available to them on non-student days, of course, to safeguard student attendance. So on to the survey. While the survey was officially opened from November 13th through November 19th, additional responses have been collected and analyzed up through today when we got eight additional parent responses, bringing our grand total to 2,169 students, taking second place in our response counts. Well done, students. Parents and guardians are now up to 1,328 and staff at 2,465, with responses coming from all positions and labor groups and with a majority of responses coming from our teachers. This gives us a total of 5,962 responses as of about 11 o'clock this morning. For those who are interested in our response rates from parents, given the three options for surveys, we had about 31% choose the very short form. 15% chose the à la carte options, many selecting every option. And then 55% chose the entire enchilada option and provided responses on every possible thing. Strong agreement was found across all groups regarding the start and end of the school year being about right. Similar strong sentiments were captured for both the staggered start concept as well as adding kindergarten to that concept. Conferences, which to kind of touch on the last discussion, you can find those in your school data books at the OPS Research webpage for any school you would care to look at for both spring and fall. Generally, staff and our families support the timing of conferences for both fall and spring. One exception being concerns from about 30% of our high school staff members that spring conferences might be just a little bit too soon. Additionally, when asked to comment about conferences, many students indicated that teacher availability at their conferences is obviously an critically important component. More on this in a moment when we talk about changes. Results were somewhat split on this. Certainly, I heard our teachers, who, some of which may be yelling at the camera right now. So a little history. Our Thanksgiving break, being the full week for both staff and students, was one of those elements that we brought about during the pandemic. None of you throw anything at me either, please. And that was when we were asked to create as safe an environment, especially during the winter months, as humanly possible, which meant no one in our buildings for prolonged periods of times when that could be afforded. Previously, our district utilized these days similar to how we're proposing to utilize them now. The needs that we would justify for these, this change would be compensation for classified positions on non-student days. A break day means no opportunity for these staff during compensation. Additionally, needs for professional development and teacher planning. These are opportunities for nearly half of our staff being compensated based on the hours worked. And then lastly, building-level professional development. Pandemic-related changes to the week discussed earlier resulted in the loss of valued building-level development day. So looking at our justification for this, which we are recommending to be included in the calendar, is that regarding the start and end of the school year, all staff groups indicated a strong preference for ending the school year prior to the Memorial Day. Looking at rank-ordered preferences, they also ranked this higher than the Thanksgiving break concern being for a full week. Parents generally favored a full week for students, though a significant number of parents are suggesting that a shorter break is something they would be open to as well. And also noting that only one other district does have a full week for staff, with 88% of the other districts having a break similar to what we're proposing. The remainder being less, just generally Thursday and Friday. To a less contentious topic, winter and spring breaks. There was strong support for the duration of our winter break, which is very similar in duration to most other metro areas, with no other district having a longer break and only three districts out of eight having a shorter break. Regarding spring break, majorities of all groups supported the proposed timing of spring break, with the next highest response rate being that the timing of spring break was a little bit too early. Almost no respondents indicated that spring break was too late. And that might go for the last four or five calendaring cycles. Okay, so we'll now transition to some proposed changes and additional or new concepts associated with the calendar that we come before you tonight for approval. The first change from the draft calendar presented at the last meeting of our board is to swap spring conference timing for high school and elementary. The results in high school, this results in high school conferences occurring one week earlier than originally proposed and elementary conferences occurring one week later than originally proposed. The reason is largely associated with high school athletics and ensuring teachers, who are also coaches, are available to attend conferences. Specifically, the week we originally proposed for high school conferences included several district tournaments for winter sports, as well as being the first week that the NSA, which is the sanctioning body for athletics at high schools for the state of Nebraska, has that as their first week of spring conferences. And to fit all the competitions in throughout the year, that creates a hardship and a conflict with conferences. The week we've moved it to has no currently scheduled sporting endeavors to ensure that those coaches are able to attend conferences and meet with the families that attend. And finally, I would just say, as it relates to the elementary conferences, this change, based on what I see in the data and the preferences for conference timing from both staff and parents, it will not harm their conference attendance time period. Spring break is the second change we're proposing, and that is moving it one week later. While a majority of all groups supported the proposed timing of spring break as about right, the next highest response rate was that spring break was at least a little too early. Additionally, staffing issues and attendance challenges have made ALPA-21 testing more challenging. So as you'll note from the ALPA-21 report, the window for that closes. The final week is traditionally when we have spring break. So with some of the attendance challenges we're seeing, as well as a pretty tight ALPA-21 window, this week is hoped that it will allow for those students to be caught for this last bit of test. And if you look at the results for ALPA-21, you'll see some no data. And those rates differ by subject area. And that's because they may have gotten them for the first two, but then they were absent and unable to be caught for the last two subdomain tests. And so that is one of the reasons we're moving forward, in addition to public sentiment wanting it to be a little bit later. So two new concepts proposed for the adoption into the 202425 academic calendar are split. So two new concepts proposed for the adoption into the 2024-25 academic calendar are split days for building-based professional development and teacher planning and adding kindergarten to the staggered start concept. Split days are being proposed for both November 25 and 26 during the week of Thanksgiving and December 20 and January 3, the day's bookending winter break. These days will reduce some pressure on both those developing training and those consuming it, as more time is afforded for both developing the training and responding to maybe the day's prior efforts and things that you heard in an area you want to go a little bit deeper on, as well as the pain of sitting through full days of training will be lessened, is our hope, with teachers able then to do planning in the afternoon or morning, however they're able to arrange the day with their principal. Regarding the strongly supported concept of adding kindergarten students to the staggered start concept, some staff did express some reluctance based on a lack of clarity regarding what this day would look like. One staff member captured many of our sentiments by indicating in a comment that they sure hoped a kindergarten teacher or two would be included in the planning process. I could not agree more, nor could my favorite kindergarten teacher, Ms. Donna Dobson. Therefore, we will be inviting the several kindergarten teachers who indicated in their survey that they'd be willing to support planned development and then provided their contact information. We'll look for them to join Donna and I to create a plan for that day to share with schools that will welcome our youngest students to the K-12 setting in the warmest, funnest possible way involving all staff at that school. So it's not just an extra day of work for the kindergarten teacher and that everyone is integrated into that welcoming and first day of academics. So lastly, in addition to the next steps shared at the beginning of the slide for this calendar, we also have some next steps shared to bring the next versions of our calendar to you for approval. Specifically, we'll take the survey data collected for this round of calendaring to inform the topics we will bring to varying focus groups, from stakeholder groups, each to their own interests, to address elements of the how we go about the whats identified in the calendar. For example, family needs for late starts and supporting challenges for staff created by the calendar, as well as opportunities ensuring uninterrupted compensation for our hourly staff. Our goal is to have two additional years of calendars, as well as the products of our efforts with the focus groups for you in April of this year. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you for your work on the calendar, for bringing this to us. Any questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you very much. I think that the changes that you have anticipated and built in, you know, make the same number of people happy as angry, and that's the best we can hope for. I do have one question, though, about the staff days, the first two days of the Thanksgiving week and the first day, last day and first day, you know what I'm saying. Those are all going to be half workdays and half professional development. I have a question, and it's probably not for you, it's probably for Mr. Ray, and that is, does professional development have to be on those days? I'm just thinking that those are great days to get in there and get caught up, and particularly at Thanksgiving, it's the end of the year and the day before Christmas. Is professional development necessary or required, or do we have a certain number of hours we're supposed to do, or how's that work out?
So professional development is absolutely necessary. If you look at the information that we've just been presenting on the last two presentations with the scores that we've been talking about, the last two board meetings, professional development is absolutely necessary.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to minimize professional development. I was just wondering if there were other days that it could be, like a whole day someplace else or something. I'm just asking.
There are days within the calendar that are still curriculum days, and I'm not sure we're calling them curriculum days on the calendar. We're calling them...
District-level professional development and building-level professional development.
That's true. Okay, great. Thank you very much. No, I'm not, just fleshing it out. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Ms. Foll?
Hello, thank you. So the changes this year compared to last year, is there going to be any reduction in planned time for elementary schools or secondary schools, teachers? Will there, is there a reduction in planned time this proposed upcoming year compared to this year or even last year?
So the calendar doesn't contemplate any changes to planned time. I believe that's the subject of a negotiated agreement, and its provision is, to some degree, dependent on our staffing. So none of this should take away any planned time.
Okay, thank you. And another question, I, if y'all can already tell, I talk to teachers a lot, and I have a lot of conversations with them, not just the leadership at the OEA, but just, I have a lot of teacher friends, my friends' parents or teachers, like, and I hear a lot of conversations about four-day work weeks and what that would look like. And I wonder if those conversations have ever been had at the district level with you, with Mr. Ray? And if they have, have you weighed the pros and cons of a four-day work week?
So Scott, I'll take that one. Thank you. We have discussed it. It has been brought up before, but we have no plans of going to a four-day work week. I think we should, we're trying to get to a five-day work week and I know that sounds weird, but we're trying to get to a point where we're not expecting people to do things on Saturdays. So all the information that we presented the last couple board meetings, to my earlier point, this is not the time to go to a four-day work week. This is not the time to go to make changes that lower our requirements or lower our standards. We have to keep moving with the things that we're working on, and at this point, this year, there is no recommendation or no support from administration to go to a four-day work week. It's counter to everything that we're working towards and working for.
Thank you for your response. Like I said, I have lots of conversations with teachers and the environment that we put them in and the strenuous standards that we hold them to are to be commended, but are also a huge stressor on the teachers. And we know that when teachers feel more supported, are less stressed, have more planned time, all of those things, the students usually perform better. And so I just, you know, this is not something I feel strongly either way, it's just something that teachers have brought up to me, and so I feel inclined to have the conversation as we talk about the calendar, because I just want to, I think the best interest of the teachers ultimately is also the best interest of the students. And I will argue that every day of the week. And the more support systems, the more we listen to our teachers, the better our students will do. And if it's an argument of, you know, the minutes that we have our students in class, a lot of other school districts have less curriculum time, less lesson time than we do and are performing better. And there's lots of different variables as to why they perform better and why our students don't, but we can't overlook that variable either. Thank you.
Mr. Teal?
Thanks, sorry, I was reflecting on Ms. Foll's comments. I'll just give you my, I want to, again, thank you for the effort in kind of pulling our random Fridays and Mondays to the corners of the calendar where they can fit a little bit better into people's schedules. Also, thank you for looking at that first Tuesday in November, and I think as we continue to have those conversations, when we've got our schools open, it's an important consideration in how we arrange our calendar as well. So I appreciate making that effort as well, and I feel like, I don't know, I think this is my third time through this, I'm starting to understand how this all works. So this, actually, I can read this, this looks comprehensible, it's not just a bunch of colors on a map anymore. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? With that, I'd take a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Foll. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Teal?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Foll?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nainai?
Motion carries, thank you. There are two receipted reports on the agenda this evening, item K1, On Track 2022-23, and item K2, Attendance and absenteeism 2022-2023. Mr. Ray, for some final comments?
Yes, so just want to highlight, and it's been mentioned by a couple presenters, that on the receipted reports, they do call out specifics on freshman academies and strategic plan of action. So you're not necessarily waiting for a workshop, you're not waiting for a specific agenda item. They are callouts in the receipted reports, so you'll see that as moving forward. And I also, I do want to thank our research department, the stuff that they've put together for these workshops, I'd put it against any school district in the country, and how they share the information. It's not hidden anywhere, it's not, it's all out there, we're not hiding anything, we're all, we're sharing the information that we have and providing it as part of receipted reports or on the agenda or in the board meetings. So thanks again to the research department.
Thank you, and we have no closed session tonight, so with that, let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned at 8:35 p.m.